Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee here in the Middle High School Library on Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. If you could please rise as we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that no sooner anyway than 7:15, we will have a full year, a fiscal year 2025 public budget hearing that'll take place. So we'll switch over to that when the time comes. To kick this off, is there anybody who would like to address the committee before we get started? Okay. Up next, I'd be, we're looking for reading and approval of the minutes from our November 28, 2020, from our November meeting. If the committee could take a look at it and if I'd be looking for a motion and a second to approve them or amend them.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, report of the superintendent of schools, Mr. Schaefer.
So the first item I have is the recommendation of Dr. Chris Basta as the assistant superintendent of the Abington Public Schools effective July 1st, 2024. Before I do that, I want to make sure that I thank all the members of our screening committee. Felicia coordinated the work of the committee. We had James Robbins, Danielle Grafton, Jim Baresi, Cam Neely, Amy Grimmett, Jacey O'Brien, Kristy Erickson, and Shawna Torpe. And I just appreciate the level of involvement and discussion that people had about this important decision. And I'm very excited that the committee and through the interview process, Dr. Basta rose to the top. The reason I'm excited about that is because I believe that he's good for Abington. He's thoughtful. He knows teaching and learning. He has high standards. He works very hard. The joke we like to tell is that we don't like to make people or turn people into workaholics. We like to hire them. He's kind of a workaholic, but he puts kids first. And he's also someone who's able to build consensus with groups as he does that work. And so I won't read you his resume. I want to recommend him to you for the appointment effective July 1st. And then I don't know if you don't want to ask Chris to come to the podium and say a few words or answer any questions, but without further ado.
Before we do, is there anybody who would like to ask any questions regarding the process or anything like that of Superintendent Schaefer or Danielle for that matter?
Do you want to add anything?
No.
Okay.
Just congratulations.
So with that said, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the recommendation of Dr. Chris Basta as assistant superintendent of schools effective July 1st, 2024.
Make a motion.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Dr. Basta. Would you like to come up? Thank you.
Super briefly, because all I would do is echo the kind words Peter had to say about the interview committee. It really is an important role that members volunteer to take on. And I thank them for the time and effort that they put into the process. I thank you, members of the school committee and Abington Schools administration and the community for trusting me and supporting me. And I look forward to continuing to collaborate with all of you for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. And thank you for all you've given to Abington so far and will continue in the future.
I could try to knock out the next one too before we go into our public hearing.
Yeah, for 10 minutes, so kill time.
So I think people know that REEDS Collaborative is a collaborative that we're a member of, that we work with, with low incidence populations of students who need additional support and have challenges. It's a, it's a large collaborative. There are many surrounding communities who remember this collaborative. And Brockton and Whitman Hansen approached the collaborative and asked to be members of the collaborative. And I think the executive board unanimously voted to accept them. Part of the process though is having each member's school district's school committee vote and weigh in. And if, I think it's, if two-thirds of the districts approve the district, then the district's able to join the collaborative. And so I'd be asking the committee to consider allowing Brockton and Whitman Hansen to join the REEDS Collaborative.
Can I ask where they were before for that population of kids?
Brockton was not in, I don't know if they're in any collaboratives. They're large enough that they may have been pooling students on their own. That doesn't mean they don't have audited student placements. Whitman Hansen is definitely already a member of Reed, North River Collaborative. And I'm not sure where else they're a member.
What are the other schools that are in REEDS Collaborative?
That's going to be a hard one for me to answer. There's a dozen.
Okay.
Maybe Metapoiset, Lakeville, Rochester, Tarrant.
Maybe I can ask the question differently. What's the, for everybody's education, maybe the difference between REEDS Collaborative and North River Collaborative?
REEDS is mostly by, used by us for evaluations. REEDS has a very strong hard of hearing program for students. And so that's, that's a go-to for many districts. They also have REEDS Academy, which is for social, emotional behavioral needs. North River also has that similar program. So what happens is you send families to different places and they try to find the best fit. You try to match the student with the best fit, but then you, some collaborative specialize in one thing or another. And you try to find the best fit for families. So they'll go visit the different collaboratives. They may go to South Shore Collaborative, REEDS Collaborative, North River Collaborative, depending on either the speciality of the collaborative or what you feel the best fit might be. Also depending on space, you send people to different collaborations. James Robbins would do a much better job of this than I am. So James, if I'm getting anything wrong, just let me know.
Okay. Okay, great. That's good to know. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Would there be drawbacks for us in having larger admission to the collaborative?
The only drawback is, you know, the more people at the table voting, you know, you may not have something go your way, but I honestly, votes, I don't know it had been part of a vote that wasn't, you know, 90% in favor of something. It's really, you know, you've got a group of educators and people trying to work toward the health of the collaborative so that they can do the best for kids. So I don't, I don't see that as a, much of a problem.
Okay, so like we're talking financially or service-wise? We're not looking at a detriment to?
No, our, our costs would stay the same. So.
Okay.
There's 15 districts that are members of REEDS.
Of REEDS, okay.
So we're looking to go from 15 to 17?
Anyones have any questions? All right, so with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve Brockton Public Schools and Whitman Hansen Regional Public Schools as members of REEDS Collaborative effective July 1st, 2024.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's all said.
The next two are, you know, I'd ask for separate votes on these, but they're really just ministerial. They're just technical aspects. They are, they are for me to be a member of the Board of Directors this current school year. It's only superintendents who serve on these boards. We just never took the official vote. So unless people had questions, I'd ask for the committee to please make a vote for me to be in a member of the Board of Directors of North River Collaborative and then also for the REEDS Collaborative.
And as you said, this is for this current school year, correct?
This is for this current school year.
It wouldn't make sense for next year's school year for it to vote you.
No, not so much.
He can.
Unless you really want to stick around for that. Anybody have any questions regarding either of these? We'll vote separately, but we can take questions on either of them independently. All right, so I'll just go in order, the North River Collaborative Board of Directors. I'll be looking for a motion to appoint Peter Schaefer to serve as the Abington Public Schools representative on the Board of Directors of North River Collaborative for the 2023-2024 school year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And likewise for 2023-2024, REEDS Collaborative Board of Directors, I'll be looking for a motion to appoint Peter Schaefer to serve as the Abington Public Schools representative on the Board of Directors of REEDS Collaborative for the 2023-2024 school year.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the purpose of tonight is really to have this budget hearing. And I don't, I think you probably don't want me to wait another couple of minutes so I can announce that Peter Serrino.
Yeah, go ahead. Why don't you skip to that? Yeah.
Unless you want to some?
No, I was going to suggest that, so that works.
Peter Serrino, under information was named the District 9 Athletic Director of the Year, which obviously is testimony to the work that Peter does. It can be a thankless job being an athletic director. I don't know if people are aware, but sports brings a lot of emotion to it, which makes the job tough. Proud, not only Peter, but I'm proud of our coaches and I'm proud of our players. Because it isn't just one person, it's really a team of people. But he's the person who helps to coordinate that team, so I wanted to recognize him.
Yeah, congratulate, and I don't, I don't think this is the first time he's won that either. So I feel like I've seen this before. Yeah, so congratulations to Peter. And I guess it looks like this, this was sent to him, so hopefully he'll be receiving an award some point in the future. So that's great. I think it is a good reflection on the entire district. Mr. Bourne, I'm sure you can agree too, as part of the high schools. And I know they've received numerous sportsmanship awards in the past too, so I'm sure this plays a part in all of that. So pass along the congratulations to him from us. I know it comes from me and I'm from all of us, so thank you very, thank you very much. Thank you very much for all you do with the high school athletics as well. Mr. McCurn, I know it involves you guys now too with the eighth graders, so thank you. We're going to say it's close enough to 7:15 since it's like 7:14. And if anybody comes in, we can start, we'll restart from the beginning. But at this point, we'll open up the public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 budget. And I'm going to defer to yourself, Dr. Michelle, and the subcommittee for anything to begin right now.
So I'm just going to kick it off and turn it over to the subcommittee and Felicia at whatever, whatever point people want to stop me or interrupt me or want to go first.
Sorry.
See you.
You were last year. So in your packet, published online and shared with the community is, and Felicia's going to go through the parts of this, is really, I think just about anything you'd want to know about our budget, from, from overviews of areas to line by line. And I, I don't want to steal what Felicia's going to provide you. But I do want to highlight that to people because it's important, because our goal is to make sure that there are no questions that go unanswered about the budget. Because this is where we need to be able to provide resources, precious resources, precious tax dollars to support teaching and learning for our students and all of the things that we do for kids. And so the goal is to make sure there are no questions that go unanswered. So we're going to make this presentation tonight, but we're not going anywhere. All people have to do that are watching this is email us, call us. There'll be a series of meetings coming up as we move toward town meeting. Tonight is a snapshot in time. Tonight is where we are as of January 9th with a preliminary budget proposal. So although we are confident in what we've given you here, there are things here that could potentially shift as we move toward town meeting. But that's, that's what you want, that sense of diligence when you're looking at a budget proposal. Felicia's going to talk about some of those things in her section. Again, I'm not going to, going to read to people. I do want to just highlight that FY '25 preliminary budget proposal of $31,895,119 has a couple of assumptions that we need to focus on as we develop this budget. First off is maintaining reasonable class sizes pre-K through 12 for our students. Populations change, populations shift, and we need to be nimble and be able to address those needs as they change year to year. We are crossing our fingers and we're cautiously optimistic that we're going to continue to benefit from Student Opportunity Act money. That money is for the types of challenges that we have in the Abington Public Schools, especially with our students who are learning English and being able to support them. So our budget is using some assumptions around that population and benefiting from some of that Student Opportunity Act money that is for those programs. It maintains the required commitment to resources like hardware, software, and books or consumable supplies. We need, districts need those tools. Public schools need to be able to give students the tools that they need so that they can be successful. But there has to be an ongoing replenishing of those supplies, updating those supplies if we're going to maintain and have competitive educational program. And there are certain built-in increases for fixed and mandated costs like salary accounts. We know what those numbers are, so we're able to put those numbers in the equation. And unless you have questions of me on those things, I'm going to turn it over to Felicia. Unless members of our subcommittee forgot something?
Good, go ahead. Okay. Thank you, Peter. I also would like to thank Melanie and Heidi for being on the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. This budget is a compilation of requests and requirements that we have. We've met with principals, department heads, directors, and have put together the requests, and you'll see those in the, in the presentation. In the budget book or budget packet that you have, I just want to spend a minute talking about those things that are in there for you to look at. It's also posted online. You have the budget message that Peter just described. There's the planning article schedule. The student enrollment data and overview of our class sizes is in there and our historical data on class size. There's a breakdown of where our staff is located by school. This looks a little bit different than it has in previous years. Thank you to Danielle for recreating a document, this document. So this has where, where each staff member is located. Next, you have how our budget is appropriated. So when we take our $31 million, how it's broken down by administration, instruction, other school services, operation and maintenance, and programs with other districts. You have an increase by major category page that I'll be spending a little bit of, some time on tonight. There is the staff requests that is included in the preliminary budget. And then you'll find the instructional material requests separated as district-wide, elementary, and secondary. And then a line-by-line breakdown of where we anticipate the money to go. Staffing, software, supplies, other school services, special education. It's all in that last pages of the budget packet is the actual budget document. And then the last few pages are the article requests that we'll send over to the town. Okay, so are there any questions on the packet? All right. Thank you, Chris. So the first thing we're going to talk about is our staffing requests that are included in our preliminary budget tonight. These positions represent what we believe we need in the district right now. So our first, the first position is a grade six teacher. By adding a grade six teacher, it adds a seventh section in grade six, reducing the class size from what we, what would be 28.8 with six sections to 24.7 students. And of course, we don't have a .7 student, but that's the, that's the, it would be 24 or 25 students. So sixth grade teacher to reduce class size. The second position identified is a grade one teacher at the Beaver Brook. And that position maintains grade one class sizes and improves support for student learning, students learning English. Currently, there's a foundational class for newcomers. And this would take that foundational class, eliminate the foundational class, take that English language teacher and she would provide, or that position would provide services to a grade level. And then we would add another first grade classroom. So all students would be integrated into a regular classroom with the support of an EL teacher. We have a .5 English learner tutor at the Woodsdale School. This is currently funded through our ESER grant. And the ESER money, federal ESER money is ending September of this year. So we can't, cannot use it in next year. Any money that, we will spend it out by the end of September. But there, there will be no other federal COVID relief money. So this is to provide the funding for, for the half of the EL tutor. Half is already in the budget. We have requesting a .8 EL teacher at Abington High School to provide support for students learning English. I should also note, take a second to, to explain the importance of supporting our English language students and how that actually improves the instruction of other students within the classroom by providing those students support than their support for all students. And more attention can be spent on all the students in the classroom. We have a .6 English learner teacher at the Woodsdale, again to provide support for students learning English. There, we're requesting two math interventionists at the middle school. Those are also currently funded through the ESER grant. And they provide math support for students. One is, provides support for students in grades five and six, and one provides support in grades six and seven. A, requesting a .5 school adjustment counselor at the Woodsdale to support all students at the Woodsdale School. And there is currently a .5 school adjustment counselor at the Woodsdale. So this would be adding a .5 to that position. And we have a technology teacher for the Woodsdale and the Beaver Brook. Currently, technology courses for students at Beaver Brook and Woodsdale are facilitated by a tutor, and this would replace the tutor with a teacher. We also have a number of positions that we're considering, our tier-two positions or positions that were considered but did not make it into the preliminary budget proposal. It's important to note that these positions are positions that could, are needed or could be absolutely used in the district, but they didn't make it as a priority. An Abington Middle School EL tutor that's currently funded through ESER. Another portion of an EL teacher at Abington High School. School, another school adjustment counselor split between Abington Middle School and Abington High School. A administrative assistant and family liaison. A shared nurse district-wide. An Abington High School art teacher, actually, Abington High School Middle School art teacher, Abington High School English teacher, and an assistant principal at the Woodsdale School. Take a breath. Are there any questions on positions? Okay. So in the next, we're next going to talk about our increase by major categories. So as we talk about the increases to the budget, there are some that are built-in increases, as Peter mentioned. There are contractual obligations in the salary account that are contractual obligations. So $1,44,015 are contractual obligations. We have our new positions at $425,226. So we anticipate our salary account to go up $1,469,241 if we were to add all the new positions in that we just spoke about. Special education, also called programs with other districts. Those are students that have services in a school other than the Abington Public Schools. We're anticipating our tuition to go down this year, $179,607 as a result of students aging out, students coming back to the district. Students had been outplaced. And then we believe that, James and his team believe that they can be successful back in the district. We are anticipating a $72,056 less in circuit breaker reimbursement next year. That is a reimbursement that we get from the state based on how much we spend on special education this year will get next year. So that number as a, is a percentage of what you spend. You pay, you're responsible for the first about $50,000. Then you get a percentage for every dollar over the $50,000. And right now, we're anticipating that reimbursement to come back in at 70%. It could go as high as 75. And in other years, many years ago, we've seen it be much below the 70. But a good place to start is 70%. And as we get closer to town meeting, as we see state budgets that come out, that may move closer to 75. And that impact to, $72,000 impact to our budget may be decreased. We have a transportation contract with First Student. We are going into our fourth year with that contract, and that's a 4% increase. Special education transportation is a 10% increase at $52,291. We've just seen the cost of transportation skyrocket over the last year. There's fewer vendors. We bid them out and we're, we're paying more for transportation. Also here, you'll notice an increased busing for $83,340. This is to add another bus to our bus routes or our bus fleet, if you will. Right now, we have a bus, an Abington High School bus that is more than an hour. Their run is more than an hour. Starts at 6:30 in the morning and Mr. Bourne will shake his head and say, yes, it's late many days. And then it goes and does a Woodsdale run. So oftentimes, it's late starting the Woodsdale run, or in the afternoon especially, it leaves the high school and we've looked and then get late to the Woodsdale. And we have looked at all combinations of moving students, moving stops, moving kids onto other buses to see if we can get that route or less, or free up space in another bus to decrease that time. And one of the ways that we can solve that problem of our students not having to be on a bus for more than an hour in both the morning and the afternoon is to add what we call a two-tier bus, which is a bus that does two schools. So a bus that would do the high school and then another run at the middle school. I'm sorry, at the Woodsdale school. All the buses that run at the high school then go to the middle school, to the Woodsdale, sorry, Woodsdale School, and all the middle school buses go to the Beaver Brook. So it's, that's the, that's, and it's $83,000 to add that bus. Technology and instructional materials. We have our laptop replacement request of $240,000. $200,000 is to provide new laptops to fifth graders and new laptops to ninth graders. So a student would have a laptop for four years and then they would trade it in and get a new laptop in ninth grade. Then those computers that are collected in ninth grade, depending on how, depending on the, how good they are, are sent to the elementary schools. And each classroom at the elementary school has a set of computers. After four years, a student computer, the batteries don't last as, the charge doesn't last as long. They're not, the technology has changed. But at the elementary level, they can take advantage of those computers. So computers are not thrown away. They're reused. So computers are not thrown away. They're reused. And any computer that isn't in good enough condition to go to become an elementary student computer is, we take the parts out and the computer technicians reuse those parts as they repair student laptops throughout the year. This also includes $40,000 for staff laptop replacement. And this is to do one-sixth of the staff each year. Anticipated that a, that a staff laptop would last six years as opposed to four years of a student laptop. And our technology director believes every six years is a good number for staff laptops. We have an, we're requesting an increase of $225,391 in instructional materials. And there's, as I mentioned in the budget packet, a list of what those instructional materials include. We have an increase in maintenance, supplies, materials, and contracted services of a 10% increase of $43,881 for our regular routine maintenance. And our natural gas, we can contract natural gas with the town of Abington. And we anticipate an increase in that contract equalling 120, our portion, $120,672. So for a total increase to the FY '24 school department budget of $2,182,493 or a 7.35% increase. Are there any questions?
Thank you. For, just before we do it, I want to ask, is there anybody in the public that would like to ask any questions? Because then I'll close the public hearing part of it. We can continue on our side. Is there anybody in the public that would like to ask any questions of Dr. Michelle, Mr. Schaefer, any of us regarding the budget? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting. We'll go back into our session now. I invite anybody who has any questions. I have some, but I want, if anybody has any questions to go ahead and ask, we can go from there. Oh, first of all, Heidi and Mel, do you have any, I didn't know if you had anything to add to the end of Felicia's two as part of the subcommittee?
I think all I wanted to add was that we also cross-referenced the strategic planning that was done in the fall, even though I don't think that that report is final yet. The community feedback that was received in the surveys, we ensured that the budget dollars aligned with the focus from the community and which that community survey included teachers and administration as well. So I think we're spending dollars wisely. I think there's a lot more that we could have put up there as needs. But a 7.3% increase seems like as far as we can push it. So I'm happy with what we're presenting. I wish we could do more, but we'll continue to get creative.
It was two and a half hours of paperwork, uncomfortable questions, and a fine-tooth comb, I would say, is fair enough to. A lot of questions that are about of what makes the most sense, what gets prioritized. Prioritize is tier one versus tier two, wants and needs. Remembering that with every dollar, there is a student or an employee attached. And that is at the heart of what we do. These look like huge numbers. But the allocation, when I left that room, I was very comfortable with. Everybody went into this with the right mindset and with the best possible outcome, if that makes sense.
No, it does. It does. Thank you.
Just to clarify on the busing comment, because if I didn't have this information, I might be confused. It's not that we're buying another bus. It's that we're through our contract.
Contracting, correct.
Least buses. We're adding another.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both for your time, too. I know it's a lot, so I appreciate it very much. Anybody have any questions that they want to ask Dr. Michelle or Mr. Schaefer? I have a couple, but so if you want, I can, I can go first. Either of you, I guess. So I know we mentioned a new sixth grade teacher for the class size. I was looking at the current, I guess it's the enrollment data page.
Yep.
So, and I know there can be movement within, so like this could be something that's just going to be discussed later on. But currently, grade three has eight sections and 24 students per. Eight sections means eight teachers, right?
Yes.
Okay. Grade four has seven teachers. I guess I'm trying to do that, like that increase would seem significant if we didn't add a teacher to, because the seventh grade, fourth grade right now has 23. And we're going to lose a teacher, keep about the same amount per, I guess I'm just looking that math there.
Peter, I think that's the classes.
Yeah.
Yeah, teacher would, this, this anticipates a teacher moving from three to four.
Okay.
To stay with that bubble.
Okay, but I get, and that makes sense, because the second grade right now is at 21 per.
Right. So, so grade three teacher would go to grade four, unless I have it wrong, which would maintain class sizes of 24 and 23.
Okay. All right, no, that helps make sense. Thank you. I appreciate it. I figured it was something along those lines, but um. So I guess this is a broader question, Felicia, and it might not be, and I, I pretty much know the answer. I feel I have to ask it. Over the weekend, I think it was over the weekend, at least that's when I started, over the weekend, Governor Healy announced budget cuts for fiscal year 2024, I'm imagining, right? That's what those were for.
Yep.
So in your forecasting, like how do you, how do you take any kind of preliminary impact on how that may affect this budget going forward?
So this weekend, Governor Healy announced what are called 9C cuts to state budget. It did not impact chapter 70 or any local aid. It mostly impacted what are called air marks or special legislation, special funding. I, I don't know. It's hard, it's very hard to say. I was very surprised to hear that as we've had many, many quarters of very robust tax collection. And the last, I think she said, six had, had gone down. So I don't, I don't know until we see a state budget. However, there has been a very strong commitment by the governor and the legislature to fund Student Opportunity Act over the next, it was a six-year, we're in six-year commitment. And we're going to year three. So, and we are one of 14% of the school districts in the state that have benefited from the Student Opportunity Act significantly. And that's because the funding formula had underfunded, the previous funding formula had underfunded communities like Abington for many, many years. So it's making up for that. So I would hope that they'll continue that commitment of Student Opportunity Act. And when I say continue, I mean what we've received the last two years. It, that's part of our base now. Unless there was a significant cut to chapter 70 or school funding across the board, that stays the same. It's will we get another $1.2, $1.8 million? And we won't know that until the governor's budget.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Probably more than you wanted to know.
Yeah, no, that's, I just, it's out there. People, like especially when that comes and then our budget comes three days later. People are going to ask the questions. I have a couple more. Does anybody want to ask any, anything else?
I don't think I have any questions.
On the increases by major category, are the transportation and special ed contract increases?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And up top in the salary, does that include, and maybe you don't even have any, but does it include any known retirements? If you do know of them?
It does not include any retirements yet.
Okay.
As, as we get more, closer to having a budget.
Yeah.
And we have no known retirements. We have a few people who have talked about retirements. Then we'll take a retirement offset.
Okay.
Which means we take their salary and take, then take an average of where we hire. And so there's some number in between.
Yeah. Felicia, right now, we know we have.
For this year?
I know at least two.
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 Okay.
Please don't ask me the name.
Well, I know one, because it was in the, I remember seeing it. I messed up the date. But it's, it's midway through next, next school year. It's not current. It's not the beginning of the school year.
We have one, one teacher and another, perhaps custodial.
Yeah. And so those are, like we were saying earlier, as we approach town meeting, those are the things that we adjust.
Yeah.
Are you pro?
I think the last, the last thing I had was the very last page of that presentation. Chris, do you mind going to it for me? One more. That one. So it's, because with all, with all the focus, deservedly so, on the English, on the English learner and the staff positions for it. Like the 78% increase in student enrollment over the five years. Are you able to speak to how our staff has increased from the five years? Or is that going back too far to be able to tell like where our English learner staff was in 1920 and where it is now?
I don't have that off the top.
Okay, that's all right.
But I can get, I can get that to you.
We could do a rough.
I was gonna say, even the past like two, like a year, like even year to year kind of thing.
Let's see, actually, I have right here one. Let's just take a few.
Felicia, don't go crazy for it on the spot. It's all right.
Dr. Robbins, do you have?
Maybe take a microphone.
Yeah. Do you mind going to the podium, James?
If you don't have it, we can provide it next meeting. But I'm. I thought this was a, it's like.
Yeah, so over the last calendar year, I know that we increased by 1.4 teaching positions. This is just from last, the start of last school year.
Okay.
Going through this school year. And, but, or, but it'd be, it'd be a little bit.
It's okay. No, no, it's okay. Don't go crazy. It was just more, James, do you mind if you save it for one second? Maybe this came up and I might have missed it because I was writing something down. But in terms of going into next year, do, do you have an anticipated, the anticipated increase from 256 to something? Like, do you know what that might be based on data that you have or?
Yeah, so, so the most direct answer is that, you know, it's unknown. We can't totally say.
Yeah.
What I can just do is speak to the past few school years and kind of what that's looked like.
Okay.
Usually it is, now, we get the highest fluctuation actually during January because there's a break in academic calendar in Brazil where we get most of our immigrants from.
Okay.
And so that actually leads to some kind of abrupt enrollment, enrollment changes here. But what I can say is over the past, over the past several years, we have seen significant increase over the summer, ranging from about 10 student, 10 to 20 students. One year, not this, not this current year, but the previous year, the majority of that enrollment had been at grade five. So all of a sudden, so one thing we realized in late September is like, oh, we have a whole new caseload of English learners at grade five, but we don't have a corresponding teacher. So that's just sort of the types of situations we get into. But I would say like on average ballparking, we see about a 10 to 20 student English learner increase each summer.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Robbins. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you.
That pretty much takes care of the questions I had going through this. Anybody else has, have any questions for?
I just have a statement.
Go ahead.
Convenient time to mention it. You know, we talked a little bit about with Paul Hagerty, who is our liaison to the finance committee. And he, he pointed something out that I think is a good thing for us to point out. And then, you know, you would be wrong not to mention the bang for the buck that people are getting in their public school system for spending all these precious tax dollars. And they are precious tax dollars that we take with great respect and appreciation. Please remember that Massachusetts is the highest performing public system in the nation. Year after year after year. And the Abington students perform above average in that highest performing state in the nation consistently year after year after year. Our students enter at the elementary level and they generally score just below state averages. And by the time they leave their public schools, they are scoring above state averages. Again, in the highest performing state in the nation. It's not to say that we want to just be above average. We want to be the best that we can be for all of our students. But that average, again, I'm going to say, I say it every time we talk about this, is the best way, the best standard for us to measure ourselves. And it's not the only one. It's just one test. Having said that, our students are going to good colleges. Many of them are the first generation to go to a college. And we're proud of, of the colleges they're going to. And so that's what people are getting from their public school system for all these dollars. And it would be wrong not to at least say that at this point.
Is Paul Hagerty part of your subcommittee meetings that you have?
He was a part, we had one meeting with Paul and he is not a part of the subcommittee meeting. We had a separate meeting with Paul, but then we will go to the finance committee. I don't think we have a date yet.
It's okay. Yeah, I just, having him in there and seeing it ahead of time helps get some back, feedback as you're putting it together too, on what makes sense, so.
It's very valuable.
I don't, does anybody else have any, does anybody else have any questions you wanted to ask?
I just wanted to add, if I could.
Yeah.
Thank you to everyone who goes into this, you know, Felicia does an outstanding job. She has a lot of people in the office supporting her. I was very impressed with the level of detail that's available and the quick responses to questions that Heidi and I had, because there were a lot of them. And just wanted to highlight, you know, the lack of uncertainty that we have in Abington that's different from some neighboring districts in that, you know, we mentioned a couple of times, we're moving things into the budget that were ESER funded. We did that last year, too. So we didn't have this fiscal cliff that some other districts had that result in a lot of uncertainty for the students, for the families, for the teachers. So I think it's a good story to tell.
Great. Great. Thank you. And as the superintendent mentioned when you started, for anybody watching online, this will be available online. It's, it's part of the agenda package if you find the agenda online. If you can't find it online, feel free to call the school department. Mrs. Gaylor will be happy to point you in the direction of providing you with a copy of the budget, of this preliminary budget as needed. And it will be refined and updated as we move along. I believe town meeting is like April 1st or something to that effect. And maybe that's April Fool's joke in and of itself, that it'll be set up that way. But I think, I know it's in early April.
Yeah, it's the first Monday.
So, so if there's no further questions, I'll be looking for the first motion to submit for the annual town meeting warrant, a proposed fiscal year 2025 budget figure of $31,895,110 as the amount requested for the school department's operating budget.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Up next.
Can we talk about this for a second?
Of course. Yes, go ahead.
Every, so we, every year, we request this money for transporting our students. Students that live in Abington that choose to go to a out-of-district vocational school as a non-resident student. And this $16,657 is the cost of our portion of the transportation to that out-of-district vocational school. I organize a bus, two buses actually, with about 14 South Shore communities. And there are a number of stops on the South Shore. And then they take all these students to Walpole. So this is our portion of that, of that bill.
Okay. And I, based on, I'm looking at the last page. It's also based on a state requirement that for cities and towns to provide transportation to out-of-district vocational schools. So something we're required to do as part of.
Correct.
So I'll be looking for a motion to submit for the annual town meeting warrant, a proposed figure of $16,657 as the amount requested for student transportation services to Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the 2024, 2025 school year.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to just mention the last one?
Sure. The last one is to continue our revolving account for substance abuse prevention. This is, this account is funded with, by fines levied against Abington businesses for violation of state or local tobacco control laws. This is not an amount of money that's in that account. It's how much money could be in the account and how much could be expended by the school committee if there was that amount. We haven't actually received any money in a couple of years. But we do have some funds and that's to use to fund substance abuse prevention programs.
I think you answered a question I had as you were talking. I was going to ask, why is this part of our, why do we make them? It's because we're the ones who get to spend it?
That's correct. Yep.
I'll be looking for a motion to submit for the annual town meeting warrant, an article to continue a revolving account in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E1 and 2. Set account to be funded by the fines levied against Abington businesses which violate state or local tobacco control laws, bylaws, and regulations to be expended by the Abington School Department to fund substance abuse prevention programs not to exceed $8,000.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor? Dr. Michelle, you're up next anyway.
I am going to request that this item be postponed until the end of January meeting.
Okay. So the report for the fiscal year 2025 capital plan will be tabled to our next meeting.
Thank you.
No problem. New business establishing of next school committee meeting date, as Dr. Michelle mentioned, Tuesday, January 30th, 2024, at 7:00 PM here in the high school library. And we already hit on Mr. and Mrs. Serino being named District Nine Athletic Director of the Year. So congratulations again. Skipping down to the dates to remember, Thursday, this coming Thursday is an in-service early release day for students. Monday, January 15th is Martin Luther King Junior Day. All school offices and buildings will be closed. Next Tuesday, January 16th, is the CPAC meeting in, in the library. I know as part of it, the, the email came out today on Constant Contact. I saw, did see as part of the agenda, it was also their reorg meeting. I know there's other things also, if you need the agenda, it came out on Constant Contact today. And then again, our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, June, January 30th, at the middle high school library at 7:00 PM. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or any questions before the final?
I just wanted to add, if you have a chance to go over to the library to see the peace posters, the Abington Middle School kids did peace posters. Beautiful, they're all in the children's room, right?
Okay, great. That's awesome. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all.